Good afternoon. Welcome to this edition of the Rich Urban Show. We're happy to continue our series on interviewing the primary candidates. And today we're happy to have Donna Joy, one of the candidates for Board of Education here in Jefferson County. So please introduce yourself.
Well, I'm Donna Joy. I'm running for reelection. I'm just finishing my first four-year term. So I live in Shepherdstown.
What do you think is the most critical challenge facing Jefferson County Public Schools right now?
Well, we have a serious employee shortage, you know, teachers, service personnel. That is one problem. Another problem is a lack of emphasis on student achievement. As far as academics and marketable skills. And then the policies surrounding discipline are connected with both of those things. So the lack of discipline leads to low achievement and it leads to low teacher morale. And that's not the only, you know, problem with the, that's not the only cause of the employee shortage. But it is a factor when teachers don't feel supported, when there are discipline problems and they can't really teach when you, when you, you know, when you have one or two kids that take over the class because of the.
Yeah. Is that more the high school level, middle school, elementary, all levels?
Levels is, is what I hear from the teachers. It's all levels and I, what I'm told, I don't know for sure, but the previous administrator superintendent, her philosophy was more of, you know, social, emotional, maybe nurturing, giving students a lot more leeway, not punishment. Not that I'm advocating for punishment. It's just that there was a big shift and I don't know, you know, that could have come from the state. I don't know. But it was definitely evident and teachers have been complaining about it for several years now since the change in priority.
How long was Superintendent Bondi there?
She left last spring, so that's 2023 and I believe she started by 2015.
So that's a while, a long while. Okay. So I was actually at the Board of Education meeting when the Discipline Committee gave their report last July. And I heard the specific recommendations and I know there were certain titles that were cited, whether it was nine or two or something. Anyway, I don't remember the title numbers. But it was pointed out that actually there was pretty clear guidance in the, I guess, the state code as well as, I guess, Board of Education policy. But that, now correct me if I'm wrong, of course, that these things were often, and I think you commented on it too, if I'm not mistaken, these things are often not enforced. For instance, maybe the student will get sent to the office, you know, for whatever violation, and then the principal will send them right back. Or could you go into that a little?
Well, I mean, I taught there up until 2020 when I got elected. So I experienced on multiple occasions, student disrupting, you know, you write a referral to the office and they're sent back with cookies, joking, laughing. You know, saying, oh, they are, they, this principal, this administrator knows what she's like. They don't care. So they just send them right. That's what the kids would say. And so there was very little support for me as personal, you know, I could take my personal experience, but many teachers that I have known, there are certain administrators that were fair and, you know, did what was expected. I mean, I rave about Mr. Roman. He would always, if any, if I wrote a referral or if anybody wrote a referral, he would ask to see both the teacher and the student. And he would have a meeting with the three of us and ask both sides, what happened? And the truth would come out. More, less experienced administrators would just either believe the student or believe the student. And then, you know, just that kind of thing.
Okay. Was there a change since last, excuse me to interject, but since last July, when this report came out, has there been any progress made? It seemed like there were some recommendations made.
My understanding from teachers, no. And I believe a lot of them are following the previous policy of kind of, well, the state scores schools based on the number of referrals and things like that. So they give a point system. So a lot of school districts want to keep those numbers down. So it makes the school district look good. They're not, you know, disciplining kids. They're not, they don't have problems. That's what they'll say. Oh, we don't have a lot of behavior problems because we're doing a wonderful job. When in fact, they're not being recorded and not in all cases, but I can just tell you from my experience, a lot of times the inexperienced administrators will believe the students. Administrators appear to be intimidated by parents. They will end up blaming the teacher or the bus driver, you know, nobody wants to take responsibility, but the teacher gets blamed for everything. Oh, they don't know how to teach or they didn't even tell us that we couldn't do this. They didn't give homework. They didn't do this. The teacher provoked me. Anything, and then the administrator kind of, like I said, inexperienced, they, it's a lot easier to shake your head and agree with the parent. Yeah, I'm going to deal with that teacher. I've heard complaints about her before. And, you know, it's unprofessional and it doesn't help anybody. And I'm not saying a teacher should be a hundred percent supported. If they're wrong, they're wrong. But in, from what I have seen in public education, there's been a lot less support for the staff.
Okay. So what, what should be done or what in your viewpoint could or should be done?
Students need to be held accountable, you know, that's the bottom line. They ought to be stressing academics and attendance and treat students as, you know, they would want to be treated as their own child, how you would want your own child to go to school and learn. Have high expectations and, you know, the higher you raise the bar, the higher the students will perform. I'm not saying to stress kids out and overdo it, but right now, you know, 30% reading level, you know, passing a reading test, that's not acceptable. Not that that's the only test, you know, that we could be using. But there ought to be higher standards. They ought to be followed. Students ought to be held accountable. If students don't want to behave in school, then maybe they stay home or their parents come and sit with them until they.
Is that, yeah. Is that already, I, you know, it's been a while since I went to that meeting and so on. But is that already in those codes and regulations? Isn't there already some kind of procedure? Or if it is, is it not being enforced or what?
Yeah. I mean, I think you're talking about these tier system where, you know, if you have a certain infraction. As far as I have seen, it's, it varies. There is so much variety in what happens at each school. Even as far as what they're teaching, it's not, a lot of things aren't consistent. Yes, they follow the state you know, standards, but it doesn't matter which school you go to, you, you could be learning something different at any given time. There's, everything ought to be more streamlined, you know, you should know that no matter what school you go to in Jefferson County, there are certain expectations and they ought to be followed and they ought to be reinforced in the same way. Same as academics. You should be able to transfer to another school within the county and expect to be learning the same basic information. We have, you know, when the LSIC meetings, you find out that every school's got a different form of intervention. One of them uses iReady. One of them uses Dream Math or Dream Box. And there's, it's very difficult to monitor that, you know, from the central office when we're all on different pages, you know, everybody's got a different.
Okay. Well, is that like, as a Board of Education member, is that your responsibility to see, yours, meaning, you know, collectively the board, to see that these things are happening? Or like, if it's not you, who, who is it?
Right. Well, according to the other board members, it's not our place to do, that we are there to hire and fire the superintendent, you know, we give him the goals and they're very small, you know, usually they're not, I mean, it's just been, everything's been COVID for the last several years. And finally, people are, you know, not, they're acknowledging that we have moved beyond COVID now. So we can't keep claiming that this is COVID. It was happening before COVID, you know, the decline. I, I don't want to say too much about the former superintendent and the style and her skills. The current superintendent is highly qualified. He has teaching experience in the public schools. So there is a big difference. And I, I mean, he is making some changes and I am constantly, when I see something inappropriate, you know, as far as finances, like with the online program, the Jefferson Virtual Academy, he, you know, I asked, I said, we've never heard, how are they doing? How are they doing? I asked for months and months and months. And we finally, they came and they gave the report and I said, this is unacceptable. You're telling me there's 10% academic achievement? And again, it doesn't, we don't necessarily have to use that, that test, but we need to all agree on some tests to follow and to be able to measure achievement. And then you find out that you've got three teachers assigned to 26 kids. I said, we can't afford that. Look, you know, that's a luxury. We're not a wealthy school system. We cannot afford. When we've got teachers with packed face-to-face classes with 30 kids each. And then, you know, you've got these kids on virtual that are, you've got one teacher for maybe five kids. And the superintendent said himself, he got in, he went in to visit the online, they're back there playing ball, watching TV when they're supposed to be in class. So now, you know, we are eliminating that first through sixth grade of the virtual because it's, it's a drain on the budget. And so I do everything I can. We're not allowed to bring up a lot of stuff unless it's on the agenda. I mean, the, a lot of things have to do with the board president. And that's why this election is crucial, you know, because depending on who gets elected, I expect to be elected. I don't know for sure, but I expect to be elected. I don't know the other two candidates well enough to say which one would be an independent thinker who, because so far I've seen some board members who just shake their head yes and go along with the board president. And that's what, how they got into this mess. I mean, we have a $600,000 budget deficit right now. So they're trying to balance the budget.
Yeah, I was going to ask about the budget. Let's, let's go to that. So, and forgive me if I'm too ignorant about it, but I know the school asks like for the excess levy, however many, $20 million, whatever, we can talk, we'll maybe in a minute, talk about that. But it does, do you draw up a budget every year? Like, is that, the Board of Education has a certain process to draw the budget?
Superintendent does that. The superintendent does it and then he presents it to the board and it's usually a technicality. That's how they look at it. I don't look at it that way. I mean, I go through it and I want to know, why are you spending all this on that? And right now we've, I've met with the superintendent last week individually. And he went through piece by piece, how much money spent on everything. And that's how I know there's a $600,000 that we need to come up with or eliminate.
Right. Is that partially due to declining enrollment?
Um, yes, it's partially due to that because back when the previous superintendent started about 2015, you, you can look at it. It's on the state West Virginia scorecard. You can look and look at the records there. We had about 9,000 students. It could have been 9,200. I can't, I don't remember, but now we're down to 8,200. So about a thousand students have gone. That's one thing. So every student is $7,500 from the state.
Right.
I mean, it's been over time.
So do you think that it's declined, sorry to interject here, but is that because of school choice? Like more people would maybe homeschool or go to the Hope Scholarship? Or go to the charter school?
The Hope Scholarship has only been in effect for what, two years maybe?
Right, right.
So this was happening before that. It's, it's just intensified a little bit now. I think there was a little over 100 students going to the charter school from Jefferson County. Now they suspect it'll be over 200. That's what the superintendent says. So they're going to be losing more money this year because of the charter school. That's one thing. Then the other problem is that they got all this COVID money, the, they called it Escher funds.
Oh, yeah, I've heard it.
They started building up the school board office and creating all these positions. And then, then you got to pay them. They pay them and then they have all these extra money, what do you stipends? So we've got a, a top-heavy board office in my opinion. And I think that's why at the last board meeting, I said, no, I'm not agreeing to 113 briefs and transfers until you show me that you have, you know, done something about all these stipends and all these extra positions.
Well, I was researching and found that in Canawha County, the largest district, they have like, anyway, per number of students, they have more, significantly more students, but not that many more staff. Meaning that this is quite top-heavy. Is there discussion on trimming that up?
I'm trying. I mean, ask anybody that goes to a board meeting. Yep, I am constantly trying. And I sent an email to the superintendent yesterday saying, okay, we should look at this. We should look at this. You can't do it now because it's too late. They are already under contract for, to get this extra pay that they're getting. And, but for next year, you might want to start looking at the policies to eliminate some of these huge bonuses, they, they call them stipends, that these people working at the board office are getting.
Yeah, I remember the controversy just before you came in, I did the meeting before, when some people got up to $20,000 bonus and that's ongoing forever.
Right, right. And plus they get a regular raise every year. So they're, you know, and then they get a percentage and it's convoluted. I asked the superintendent also in that email to please explain how these stipends are working. Is it a flat amount, the 20,000, or is it exponential? Because I don't, I don't see it explained anywhere. I mean, I can't understand it and.
Well, if you don't understand, I don't think the average citizen's going to know.
Uh, yeah, correct. I mean, supposedly it's in that big page of 36 pages of policies that they passed. You know, like you said, it was the meeting before I was on the board. I mean, they literally passed that June and I started in July.
Yeah. So let me ask you another kind of relay question. I mean, it's not under your control or anything, but generally, do you believe like in school choice? Do you think it's good? People can choose a charter school, choose Hope Scholarship, choose to homeschool and choose to go to public school? Is that good? I mean, more choices?
I think that it's unfortunate that our system has gotten to the point where people want to leave, you know? Like I used to teach in Arlington, Virginia, and those public schools were better than any private school, you know? So it's, it's, it's unfortunate. It's heartbreaking how things have deteriorated. But they have deteriorated. Therefore, if it's, it's only fair to give people options. And I believe that unless they know, unless the school system, the people are aware that you're not the only game in town. We have options now. There's been no incentive to improve.
Right.
But now, if you want to keep the money, then you're going to have to fix this mess. You know, I, I don't want to, you know, blanket statement of everything's bad. Because that's what you accuse me of, but just, just for the sake of time. But no, healthy competition, I mean, that is what makes things improve. You, nobody improves without competition.
Okay. Let's ask another question. So yet another Jefferson High School teacher was dismissed for criminal sexual conduct. But they were involved, I think, in a sting of some kind of pornography, illegal pornography operation. Anyway, and I know that's not the first because we know the infamous case of Mr. Belmonte. And then the other cases of some other guys before that, Diler or whatever his name was. What's going on about that? Is there something that needs to be looked at to get more integrity in this area or what?
Well, I asked the, the former superintendent and the superintendent, I asked for an independent evaluation of Jefferson High to look at the culture there that would create an environment where pretty much every year since 2016 that I know of, that I started counting, there's been some teacher experience with a child, teacher having sex with a child on some level. One of them was a coach who was involved with a student in Martinsburg. So, you know, but it's still the same, it's not like, what is it Belmonte, the one in the closet, right? That's, was that one?
Yeah, yeah.
It's not that severe. But there has been, as much, as far as I can tell, one every year.
Yeah.
And personally, I mean, I, I mean, I, I ask about things like the, what do you call, they call it cougar hour. I call it happy hour. So an hour of the day, kids are basically doing whatever they want, roaming the halls. And that's when the Belmonte guy was with the, the child in the closet.
Is that at Washington High too, or only Jefferson?
Um, I'm only aware of one at Washington in the past couple of years.
No, I mean, is the cougar hour at Washington?
No, it's only at Jefferson. It's only at Jefferson.
I see. Yeah, that's a good point. I mean, so generally, do you think this is kind of segueing into, like, should the standard for sexual health education be abstinence from sex before marriage? Or what's referred to in the federal guidelines as Title V standards, you know?
I just think in the ideal world, yes. But at the same time, you say education, you, it's hard enough to change the school system, let alone change people's personal lives. And at least they need to know, yes, they ought to, number one, be told, don't, you know, don't get involved sexually until you know who you want to be with. It causes too many problems, et cetera.
Exactly.
We have an obligation to teach the facts that if you do engage, you could get a disease. You could get pregnant, you know?
Well, that's part of the so-called absence in education. But I think one thing I discovered that, you know, I'm in that field, is that a lot of you, and actually, you know, I've worked with a lot of youth in, in DC since I've been over here eight years, East River, whatever. Anyway, kids, you don't come from two-parent homes. And it's not unusual to hear, you know, oh, I hadn't really thought about, you know, I'm supposed to abstain before marriage. Maybe I'll try that, you know, because it's not the environment they're in, you know what I mean?
Right, yeah.
Okay, yeah.
It's very encouraged, I mean.
Do you think like the excess levy is really necessary for functioning in the schools? I think I mentioned earlier, and you correct me or give me more clarity, but, and it was hard to find out, like you say, it's not transparent. But as best I could find out, no more than 2%, not 20, one, two, of the excess levy goes to teacher salaries. So I think it's being sold kind of on a false advertising because probably most people think like, you know, if you talk about, hey, we shouldn't have the excess levy, you know, some teachers wrote comments because I wrote an editorial. Oh, well, I'm going to get cut by $8,000. I don't think that's true. There might be a 2% cut. I don't think that'd be $8,000 unless they're making a few hundred thousand a year or something. But anyway, do you have any opinion about that? It's a lot of taxes. We're, the school, and I'm kind of railing a bit, but the school's getting almost 80% of our property taxes. Is that really necessary? I mean, it seems like, I don't know. You tell me.
Well, I mean, I've questioned that as well. Like when I, this recent email, the bishop asking about, part of it is how much, how much money from levy checks do these people get that are working at the board office that are already getting, they get this stipend and then they get levy checks. I mean, there make, some of these people make an awful lot of money. And it used to be one person that had the three jobs. Now it's five people with, that have the three jobs. So those are the things that make it unjustified. Now, they also give some of that money to the libraries and Parks and Rec, different organizations. But if it's only 2% that goes to the teachers, that's, you know.
That's, I, I mean, first of all, that's another thing, you know, could you do something, like I was talking to a candidate for auditor, actually it was Trish Jackson, about the fact that it's great that the state has a checkbook system, but none of the schools use it. And I don't, you know, in other words, a system where at least you can look into some of what the money's being spent on. And I was trying real hard, you know, because I don't want to just rail against something I don't know anything about to find out like, I looked in the paper where they print up, you know, the spirit, oh, this is what the levy's going for. I think it's like, it was at least, I think the levy's like 20 million? Is it 20 million a year? I think so. It's a lot of money. And 13 million or something says staff salary. Well, what staff salary, you know what I mean? That's a lot of money.
They give teachers levy checks, like two or three levy checks throughout the year.
But it's only a couple of percent, I think. But go ahead.
If that's the case, then there's a serious problem.
Well, that's what I found out. Cause I looked up online. I mean, that's part of the problem. It's not transparent, but looked up online. And there were some charts and this and that and the other. And they're saying, oh, the teachers will get this, like one check at the beginning of the year, one at the end and depend, you know, on your tenure and this and that. But I tried to make sense of it and as best I could tell, it was no more than about 2%. But if you know differently and you should know, you can inform us, you know what I mean?
Well, I, I, I'm going to ask about it. I, I don't think this superintendent, current superintendent knows enough himself yet. But I, I'm going to get the answer to that.
That'll be good. Yeah. I mean, like there's a disconnect generally across the nation. School like, schools, uh, spending has gone up like this, you know, on this big curve.
Right.
Yeah. And but yet the performance is going like, I guess, down or. Yeah, but yet the performance is going like, I guess, down or level at best or downish. So there's a disconnect, like you're spending twice as much, three times as much, I say, compared to, say. Twenty-five years ago, but the performance is less. Well, I mean, what's the deal?
I agree. I I agree. I mean, I, that's what I see as well. Um. We, they are going to run a supposedly another levy in the fall and but. We don't need another one until twenty twenty-six, but there's.
It's not expired yet. I thought it expired in twenty twenty-five.
I he's, I thought he said it expires in twenty twenty-six, but he's gonna run it now in case it fails. Then they can run it again, is what I was told. Um, because I I was bothered by the fact that. Um, some people came from West Virginia University Extension Program. If you watch that presentation, it's been. Within the past month.
To the board, okay.
Right, yeah, and I said, and and they they said, yeah, I understand you're running a levy. In the fall, blah, blah, blah. We want some of that money. Well, after that meeting, I said to the superintendent. How did they know when we didn't even know? The board was never told. And then he said, well, I don't know how they knew. Uh, and then he told me that they were thinking of running it in the fall and.
But wait, is that legal? You could run a levy for something that's more than a year out?
I I apparently, I don't know.
That's crazy. That shouldn't be legal. I mean, I look, look, I like, I I want every student to succeed. It's not like. But I mean, you know, like, there's a disconnect. So I mean, private schools do a lot more stuff with a lot le- less money. I mean, you can say what you think about it. Some people might think they're good or bad or indifferent, but. I mean, golly. Yeah, okay, well, that's news to me. I'd like to know more about that one.
I'm gonna ask about that too. Is it legal? Because it didn't make sense to me when he when he said it. Um, but I mean, there's just a lot going on, like, you know, the fact that there. Rift rifts and transfers of a hundred and thirteen employees and.
But when he says that, why don't they rip the diversity director and the so- so- social most, I mean, nothing personal against them. I don't even. Can't even give you their names, but I mean, are those positions really necessary making? Around a hundred thousand or more, maybe the bones and and benefits, they make more than that. What and if. And maybe get rid of some of these positions and then give a couple percent raise to the teachers or whatever comes out to.
That's exactly what I advocate for. You know, we need to streamline. We need to do a whole overview. Overfall of the board office and look at, you know, what positions are really needed. We have. A thousand less students, yet. More board office employees than in twenty fifteen. It it's gone, it's doubled since twenty fifteen.
Wait a minute, the board office has doubled since twenty fifteen?
Yeah.
Like, how many employees are down there anyway?
It's about sixty-something and it used to be thirty-three, I believe.
So you have a thousand less students and twice as many employees?
That, oh, twice as many at central office. I mean.
And there's nothing to show for it in that the fact that has performance doubled since twenty fifteen? I don't think so.
It's gone, it's it's decreased. It's gotten worse, so.
Yeah, well, I appreciate you talking to the superintendent. I mean, he should be thinking about that.
I've got these two questions. Can you run a levy? You know, when it's not even due and um.
The transparency on where the monies are going. What percentage actually goes to the teacher?
Right, what percent of those levy checks actually go to teachers?
Yeah, I'd like to know. Everybody would like to know, not just.
Yeah, that's a good question.
Yeah, um, okay, well, I think we're coming toward the end. So I know we touched on a number of things, but how about, you know? Tell what's on on your mind and heart and also why would? Should the people reelect you versus um, we know there's a couple of other candidates running? And um, anything else you'd like to talk about, maybe that we didn't touch on?
Um, I don't know. We talked about a lot of things. I think that. Anybody that reads the paper or watches the board meetings will agree that I am the most passionate, most dedicated. Um. Most qualified. Of the uh board, you know, um, the other board members running or on the board um. I stress transparency and accountability. And I am willing to ask the hard questions and. I'm not there to be liked and or to make friends and that's. I why I'm hated by several people on the board and off the board. Um, they would rather I just shut up and go away and um. But I don't feel like that's my job, you know, I'm not there. Everybody else has children. If I get reelected, I will be the only person on the board without children in the school system and I'll be the only teacher. Um, and that's important because I know what goes on, you know, and um. If they are looking at it from a parent's perspective. And I completely understand that because I was a parent of children in the school system, but. I'm not biased is my point and I wouldn't be biased because I don't have a vested interest in what happens at. Say Shepherdstown Elementary School, you know, one of the candidates, his wife works there and then he has children in the school, so. You know, that's concerning when, you know. I just see that, I mean, not that he would be biased, it's just that um. I've seen as a board member. Board members advocating for things that are directly benefiting their own children and that concerns me. And.
Right.
Some of the people are maybe on the board just for what they can get for their own children and. I'm definitely not coming at it from that perspective. I've. Been a teacher since I was about eight years old. I taught my sisters how to read. I taught kids in the neighborhood. I taught at summer school. You camps. I've been teaching for thirty-five years and um. I have a lot of degrees in education and related to education. So I'm very passionate about education. I think that's the most important thing we can do besides, you know, take care of our health. Teach children to um be healthy and have a healthy environment, but we need to educate people and um. School board members ought to be there and to with that goal, to treat. All children equally, to have high standards and. See everybody as capable, you know, I understand when children come from poverty, but. We all, we need to have the higher standards so that everybody knows that they have, they can succeed.
Really appreciate, you know, your time today and coming on and um. Yeah, um, so that's really good and help help the voters, you know, decide who to vote for. Yeah, it affects everybody, whether they have children in school or not. I mean, they're paying paying for the schools. And of course, it affects our whole community, the type of education people get. So, yeah, so good.
Just can't, you know, find employees that can. You know, do a basic calculation or fill out a, you know, write a, write a report, things like that. There are lots of complaints that they have to. That's why we have trouble in West Virginia. Companies don't want to come here. Because they don't feel there is the workforce to sustain their business, you know, we can't get.
Right.
These, where are you gonna get these engineers and computer scientists? They're willing to bring pollution-causing things or assembly lines where the education level is low.
Hmm.
Doesn't require a lot because we don't have the reputation for doing well academically. I mean, I can see why.
Well, that's a lot, a lot of good information and and even have a couple of action items there. That's good.
Uh, I go to my homework again.
Yeah, so thank you again so much. I'll make this available. Um, it'll be on the Rich, The Rich Urban Show. It's on any podcast platform. Or on the video will be on visionroot.org. So we thank you for your time. I hope everybody will. Listen and make a thoughtful decision on May fourteenth.
All right, thank you.
Okay, thanks, Donna.